Thank you. Okay, the policy briefings.
So generally, I ask for a waiving of the actual reading. But in the case of the two policies that are here tonight, I am happy to read them in their entirety if a single member of the community wishes me to do so. Just giving you all the opportunity, because I know these are meaty subjects. If not, I'll do my best to summarize and then answer your question. Seeing that, I would ask for a motion to waive the actual reading.
So I'm moved. Second.
Okay.
Do you have a list of the policies?
Not yet. I'll do that when I cover them for you.
Okay. Okay. So, all those in favor of waiving? Karen, you good with us raising our hands for it? Thank you.
Great, I appreciate that. So let's start with the security cameras. So this is laying out who has access to the cameras within our school buildings and the external feeds to those security cameras outside on the building grounds, for what purposes the information can be used. You will note that can be changed, number three, and we included emergency responders. We did also designate fire and dispatch and forensics, but we want to keep it open-ended to emergency responders because we didn't exactly who might be responding to an emergency on campus. We didn't want the policy standing in the way of that. You also might notice that we struck out the member towns because if we have mutual aid responding, we want to give access to any of the first responders arriving to help us. This is only to give them access to our security cameras during an emergency, as designated by our school. So the police, the fire, and dispatch don't have access to our security cameras in the buildings for general surveillance at any time. That is not their purview, to use the cameras for those needs. The police department can use video from our cameras only if they have an open, permanent investigation. And parents do have a right to watch the videos. They can come into the school, they can watch the videos, but other students' faces will be cleared out and they will not have the ability to take a copy with them. For parents to get a copy of any security camera footage, they would need a subpoena or a court order. So this is just laying out who has access to the video, what the video is supposed to be used for. And I do want to also note that since we've had the cameras, this has always been the case, but we added up to the top from the explanation, that whenever any administrator or first responder logs in to witness and watch the videos or the current camera feed, it leaves a digital footprint with what they're watching and when they've accessed it. So we would only expect people on duty to be watching these videos and checking in. If we start seeing a pattern where people are logging in and watching video from our halls, we would have the ability to address that issue. So any questions about the policy on the security cameras? So we had a pretty substantial conversation at the last joint meeting about educational surveys. This took up the majority of our policy subcommittee meeting that we had on Tuesday. Was it Tuesday, Joe?
I think so.
No, it was last Thursday, right? Sorry, Tuesday was city friction. So last Thursday, we had a policy meeting and we discussed this. We struck out in the middle that a parent may inspect upon request. We made this more pro-parent and put the obligation on to the district instead of the parent. The district must, when possible, share to the fullest extent surveys and survey questions before they're administered. We also had a discussion about the amount of information going to parents through Parents Wear emails and other means of communication. And we did note that our administrators don't typically use the Call All feature in our district. In talking with Ryan and Jill, on average, we give two or three surveys per year. So the discussion was that the central administration will reach out using the Call All to let parents know that a survey will be coming out, that they have access to the questions, and they have access to opting their child out. So again, we're putting it on the district to inform parents of this in a timely fashion before the surveys come out. One of the reasons why the policy subcommittee did not go for an opt-in is because in consultation with Desi, talking with Russ, there are certain circumstances where thresholds have to be met for the surveys in order to stay in compliance with mass general laws, with regulations, and with Department of Education funding. So that's the changes we made to it. We are going to have a further substantial conversation about trying to set up some sort of policy or procedures around the amount of communication coming out of the district. We did note that Dave Murphy has informed parents on several occasions in the past of ways to make parents square, kind of give you a digest version of the information coming to us as parents and members of the community from the school. So there's already some of these things that we could put into place and inform the parents about a little bit more robustly. This policy, by the way, right here, is supposed to be shared every single year. If you look at the policy we have on the books right now for educational surveys and research, it's pretty strong language as it is. When we went to review it as a policy subcommittee meeting, we were actually quite surprised at how thorough it was already before our discussion in the committee meeting, I believe, back in December. So that's why we didn't make as many substantive changes as some of you might have participated, but unanimously passed through the policy subcommittee as amended here. So I would like to, as a first read, present to you Policy ILD and Policy ECAFG.
Some are headed, hand raised, Jason.
Yep, go ahead.
I just have a question. Can you speak a little bit more to the opt-in, opt-out? Like you would mention that we have to be in compliance in accordance with national law and guidelines from DESI. That's why we can't have it be opt-in?
It's not why we can't, it's why we shouldn't.
Shouldn't?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'm a little... Which surveys are we required to be in compliance with? Because often I find that the surveys that are... Some of the surveys that are administered to our students are from third-party vendors that have nothing to do with DESI. So why would we be required, or why should we be in compliance with any part of that? I guess I'm not following why we can't have an opt-in procedure instead of an opt-out. Which surveys are from DESI do we have that we have to be in compliance with? Because I know you don't even have to participate in the MCAS survey questions, because there are districts neighboring ours that do not do that, because their policy... Their school policy doesn't allow for that at all.
So again, I can't speak to all the surveys. And I can say that during COVID, there are a number of surveys that we as administrators were required to participate in. And again, I think more was the concern that there could be grant funding tied to participation in certain types of questionnaires that are included in certain things that could prevent us from getting that grant money if in fact we didn't have robust participation or this policy.
So, okay. I personally don't think that we should accept every grant dollar that gets taken over from us, frankly, because some of it comes with ties to things that we might not necessarily want to participate in as a district, but another district may want to. So if that's the case, then I think the owner should be on the district to convey that information to the parents and say what a great thing this is, and everybody should be participating, because it means we can buy a new tennis court because we're going to get grant funding for it. And I think that owners, again, should be on the district and not on our students. That's my two cents. I very strongly feel that any of these surveys should be opt-in only. And I'm not really hearing a strong argument why that can't happen.
How many surveys a year, generally speaking? Not exact number, but what kind of sense do we have for how many surveys we send out? Is it 10 a year, five a year, 18?
We really don't send... Maybe one or two?
Well, it's two this year, two last year. And that doesn't include the MCAS survey questions, so that's three right there.
Sorry, can I just answer a little bit to your question about opt-in versus opt-out?
Yeah.
So just in thinking about the student survey that's coming up, I thought part of the discussion that I learned was that people found it hard to learn about the opt-out process. And so I think one of the barriers to the opt-in process is that typically you want to incentivize... You want to give parents the opportunity by sharing all the survey questions and the information, how to opt-out, timeline, reminders. The challenge with opt-in is if you have, and I would just estimate at this point, since our deadline has passed, probably 99% of our... Roughly, a heavy percentage of our students and families have opted in, that it would make more... It's easier logistically if the majority of people are participating to just a management burden. So we would be opting in. 99, or the high 90%, of our parents would have a communication to opt-in. And I just think, logistically, with a higher percentage choosing to participate, that it's sort of easier to manage. Because I think it was a good point, like, it may be challenging for parents to opt out, so we want to make sure that we give them that opportunity. But if we were to reverse it, you know, outside of the funding argument, I think just the administrative point of managing that, the opt-in process, would be challenging with thousands opting in. So I just wanted to...
Yeah, but if we're not giving that money, then... I don't know. I'm taking my heels in on this one. I appreciate your response, but...
Sure.
Just want everybody to know where I stand, because that's what I do.
Yeah. No, I mean, I don't have children in the buildings anymore. But, and I understand what you're saying, Summer, but I think it's the best of both worlds, perhaps, if we're going with the opt-out idea. Because if the general population is going to participate in a survey and it's a smaller subset that's going to opt out, I completely understand what Ryan's saying about managing that process.
How do we know about?
How do we know?
How do we know?
How do we know what?
How do we... Maybe we have an opt-in survey and 15% of the students decide they're going to opt in. How do we know?
But then, on the...
We don't know.
But you do know, because if you... In my opinion, if you give the parent the option to opt out and they feel strongly they don't want their child taking that survey, then opt out. If you've got 85% of the parents opting out, then maybe we need to revisit it. But I think you're going to have the opposite.
But you may have 85% of the parents who are working one job, two jobs, aren't reading every Parents Wear email, don't really know that they even can opt out. You know how many people say to me, "I didn't even know I could do that. I thought I just had to do it."
So policy and procedure, right? We don't control procedure, but Ryan and Jill offered to put in procedural language to our policy that they will do the Call All to the parents to let them know that this survey's coming. And we talked about it to... We tweet it. And all the information about opting out and access to the questions is in that voicemail that they will send out to every single family in the district, proactively mentioning the opt-out feature and who to contact with each individual school. So again...
But then, that means the parent has to get the voicemail. And I love that. That's great. I think that's fantastic. And thank you for, the administrative team, for even offering that time out of your day. However, that also means the parent gets the voicemail. Parent deletes the voicemail in the middle of their workday, has to go on the website, find the opt-out form, now has to fill that out, email it to the school, go through that whole process.
I lament that parents have to do a little bit of work to opt-in or opt-out, right?
Right, right.
It's kind of what we signed up for as parents. So Matt and Cherry call the question.
Okay.
Is there a motion for a right now?
There is.
What was the...
To accept the...
First reading.
First read. I'll second.
Okay, all right. All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Principals report.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. We're rolling right along according to teaching and learning at SLRMS. I believe this is the best instructional time of the year, and it's been very nice to have consecutive school days. I'm not saying any more than that. I have for you under 5A as a PDF. Program of studies, much like Michaela brought to you last meeting. I just changed the font a little bit on the front. You can see from my two examples in my hands. And then, if you remember last time, we talked a little bit about my whole core exploratory classes in grade seven. So I'm just going to take you through a few of these edits. I did remove things like Latin, 21st century literacy, literacy in the digital age, language lab, and healthology, things that haven't been run for years, to my knowledge. On page six, you'll notice under Advanced English Language Arts, where all our advanced classes, they are recommended, not required, right, that the student get a grade A- or better. All of that language was updated. And then if you notice, I'm going to take you through a pretty quick run-through on page seven. There's an introduction to the SLRMS library. That would be an exploratory section, if in fact we can run these classes. Page eight is exploring French and Spanish, possibly another language depending on our meeting tonight. And then if you keep going, Kelly De Pasqua, the Fine Arts and Practical Arts.
No.
What is it, Arts? Arts, the Arts Coordinator.
Art and Music.
Art and Music Coordinator. She updated page 15, along with an exploring art exploratory class on page 15. And then if you continue, there's also exploring music on page 18. And that's pretty much it for the updates. I took out all the old information. I took out the Gaia's counselor and psychologist information that was in here, because this is really about the program of studies. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention and hope for your approval so that when we start course selection, we have an updated program of studies.
Any questions?
We have a possible vote, but portions of the program of studies are actually contingent upon the budget. Am I correct about that?
Yes, and we usually run them. We usually have an updated program of studies, but we may not run them depending on budget. If there's not funding to actually run the course, then the course doesn't get run, but it's always made sure that it's in the packet.
All right, so if we approve the program of studies, that doesn't obligate us into something that the budget may not support?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I thought it was a great cleanup job, interesting offering, so I make a motion to accept the program of studies.
I second.
Lucas, did you have a question before we vote?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, the Jazz Band will not run during 2023 and 2024?
I'm sorry, Lucas, can you repeat the beginning?
It says that the Jazz Band will not run during the...
Jazz Band.
Yeah, it's mostly just about the current numbers. So we're in a... We are hoping to don't back our programs at the elementary schools. Our current seventh-grade classes, now it could be small. And so it's probably going to be, because of numbers, Jazz Band looks... It's only made up of kids that we already know who could be there, and it's less than 10, probably, for next year. That would be ready for that. So our anticipation is that it would just run as part of the seven, eight band. We would love to run Jazz Band, but I think it's going to be less than 10 students that would be eligible for Advanced Band next year. But that would only be next year. We're hoping by then, by two years out, we will have the newer numbers from our elementary school growing program. Some of this is the end of COVID and how difficult it has been to build programs. Our current seventh-grade numbers are small.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Oh, okay.
I just have one small item as well. Jill Albright, who is a representative from our local Rotary Club, has been in touch, seeking interest from our district in the possibility of hosting a foreign exchange student, either next year or the year after. So I wanted to present that to the school committee, answer any questions that you may have about the opportunity, and then possibly go to the other side, what maybe we could partner with moving forward.
Did you say a student?
Yes.
Just one?
Yes. That's all they have right now.
Okay.
Where from?
So there is no, like, specific person right now, but they are hoping either next school year or the year after that they can sponsor at least one student from a European country to come over and attend school year. They would reside for about a semester. They would live with a family in one of our three towns. So it would be within the Silver Lake District.
Have we had this in the past?
Yeah, years ago.
Years ago?
Yeah, but generally, we've... There's been different partnerships, not with, like, a local organization, but it's been... There's... I'm drawing a blank now on the name of, like, a...
A...
Yes. You know, so they kind of place people all over the world. So this is more smaller, local...
The opportunity for our students to meet someone from somewhere else is fantastic. I fully support it.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion to allow Michaela to continue discussions and enter into an agreement potentially with a foreign exchange student through the Rotary program. I will second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
That was it?
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Christine, we move on to you already.
That went a little too fast, Pauline.
I was very surprised myself.
I'll take your electronic package. Should I? See, there's a financial that's attached. We have not had any significant ideas that have changed since we started. Just to kind of cover something else that we did look at. There are a couple of areas between the high school and CTE where we have an issue with the dues. The dues have significantly gone up in the past couple of years. And fortunately, there's some time for the budget. The new budget will make those corrections, those amounts, which we need to do that. And also the graduation foundation, which we reported in the past few years, because the rental of the equipment that we need to use would just exceed our budgets. We asked the high school to get everything they know about it and write down for the conference so that we know that number is certainly a valid number. We've done that. Under Contracted Services, on page four, in the athletic area, we're running into the issue where we did not fill the athletic training position, so we are currently paying for a contracted position for that. So for next year, we have budgeted that under that line, so we will include that. A few are being... It's a kind of stuff, just shows some slides in there. But we haven't seen the past, and they seem to be able to begin to pin their account groups, the deficit in the subgroups. On our charter plan, we still have deficit under property and gathering that's just beginning to be there, and I mentioned previously, that what I found is that not so much our policy is going up, but the discounts are being reduced. We tend to pay our policies bases to take away some discount rates. And those discounts, the 6% and 7% to 2% and 3%. So that's the piece that's been disrupted. And then also under the Psych Police Contracted Services area of the budget, we have a deficit at the high school area, and that's because of, we are not able to fill the high school center office position yet. So we're paying a contract service for that. So there will be a surplus to our segment, which is salary line.
It looks like she's deleting it.
And also, I was wondering if there are any questions?
Any questions?
First step, Christine's report is presented.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Moving on to you. We're flying through this paper.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick updates. The first one is on our English learner program tier-focused monitoring. So a year ago, I reported back to the committee that we completed our tier-focused monitoring review with DESI. Happens every six years. There were three areas that they asked for some follow-up on. So over the course of the year, Lana Teresko, who's the EL teacher 7 through 12, she and I worked together to complete seven updates with DESI around program placement and structure, follow-up support, and the record for our English learners. Earlier this month, we had found out we have successfully completed our review. So one year after the report was issued, we met all the criteria. So I just want to thank Lana and our teachers and principals and coordinators for their support in helping us to demonstrate to DESI that our program is in compliance. And they also helped with some improvements. Our record keeping is better and how we support our students, K-12. So I just wanted to provide that update to the committee. And secondly, I wanted to provide a little bit of an update for... On our learning walks. So in... We've been working to implement our strategy for district improvement. Some of our focus areas include inclusive practices. We've partnered with Dr. Pia Durkin over the course of the year to look at how to implement those practices in our schools. So we did... We conducted our learning walk in December with our principals, and we look forward at middle school and high school. And in February, we look forward to additional visits at our high school and middle school, and also expanding the use of the learning walks with the coordinator team. So I just want to provide that update to let everyone know that work goes on and to thank our teachers and paraprofessionals for opening their classrooms and engaging in discussions around teaching and learning.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Superintendent.
So can we... I think it just needs a login. And on there? Oh, it's a little login. It's the call and the... Oh, so I can use the main? Okay, thank you. So last time we met, our school committee announced to us for pieces of information as they related to the budget. I'm going to call them back.
I can just click it if you want to.
Sorry. Yeah, it's on.
If you say next slide, I'm...
I'll say next slide, sorry.
It's all right.
Oh, well. Probably bad reason. Next slide. Can we advance? There we go.
Awesome.
Thank you. So we're not going to go through the whole budget presentation, but we wanted to remind you of the goals that we set as we go through the budget process with our principals and with our administrators and our coordinators as well, making sure that we're meeting our student needs and keeping in mind the constraints of the budget and the towns that we serve. To remind you, the budget, the preliminary budget that we presented was a 3.78% increase. Special education transportation was a 14.29% increase. Payroll and benefits are 82% of our total budget. And health insurance is estimated, or was estimated, at 5% in this preliminary budget. But we do have an update for you. And we anticipate 2.5 high school retirements. The substitutes were calculated at FY '23 levels, and utilities were updated. Shared costs were included, but did not include any potential changes. Technology hardware items removed from the capital plan into our operating budget in FY '23, which is why you don't see amounts prior... The jumps that you see, starting in FY '23 on the budget page. Allied Health was also incorporated into this budget, is now in the salary line. And homeless transportation was calculated based on a 12-year average. So now...
Can I... I apologize, I'm going to jump in right away. Can I, I apologize, I'm going to jump in right away. 12-year average?
With special emphasis on the more recent years.
Okay.
And then trying to take into account maybe there are any situations that are present like that.
Okay, thank you.
On that topic of homeless transportation, what was the state fund interest in transportation for this fiscal year?
100%.
Right.
It was, I've never seen anything like that before. I called to see if it was a mistake.
When did you get that number? I thought that wasn't...
Yeah, I was stunned, because we had had no prior notification of that, that it would be to that extent.
So, we have been asked some questions about student teacher ratios and declining enrollment, and so our principals are going to take the next few slides and describe some of the changes that have been occurring in our schools over the past few years to tell you a more complete story.
So this slide shows the seven through 12, the student to teacher ratios by year, and FTEs as well. According to state data, the FTE counts, the full-time equivalent, as well as the student to teacher ratios have remained pretty stagnant, as you can see from this slide. In 2022, we were slightly above the state average, which it says at the bottom of this slide. It's important to note that in 2017, the state average was 13.2, so we've been six-tenths of person, or six-tenths of a person, close to the state average throughout the whole entire time. On the next slide, you can see the middle school specific data, and while this looks like it fluctuates a little bit more, you can see from the right-hand side that in 2017, we were also, you know, a little bit higher, student to teacher ratio, the state average was also a little bit higher, and now we're right at the state average of 11.9.
So let me just point out, if you go back to the path, this first one, Excel doesn't do a very good job capturing this, the table is more relevant. That's actually a, you know, more than 10% decline in the student to teacher ratio. So, the problem with the scale of the graph is that it can't show that because it's trying to capture two lines of the same thing, but 10% is not insignificant.
Well, the reason why I talked about the state average too, is that the state average has also changed, right? So, it's kind of remained as close to the state average as it is right now.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just saying, if you look historically at our student to teacher ratio, that's not an insignificant change, a 10% adjustment is not insignificant. I mean, I would at least argue that. The graph does not show that accurately, it can't because of the scaling that it's using, but 10% is 10%. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. On the next slide, these are historical FTE changes over time, and Christine gave us a lot of this data that she had on books and binders, thank you for going through those. So a lot of these reductions were really even since 2010. You can see that we reduced, at the middle school level at least, in world language, and reading and language lab classes, special education teacher that I talked about at the last meeting, a library paraprofessional, a family consumer science teacher, and a math lab teacher. And the positions that we've added, our tech ed teacher, half-time school adjustment counselor, which I also talked about in our last meeting, point two FTE, the behaviorist, and the one control coordinators behind me as well, just supporting them. No FTEs were added in core subject areas, I just wanted to share that. So our enrollment, right now, is 531 students, projected enrollment next year is 562 students, both classes will have 281 students or so, and projected enrollment for the year after is 547. So, the middle school enrollment has been increasing and continues to increase at least until next year. Thanks, Joe. So this kind of goes off the screen a little bit. The point of this slide is that our core subjects have average class sizes of 18, and you can see in our elective classes at the middle school, they are much higher numbers. We talked about this last time, in order for me to reduce or continue these type of class sizes in our electives, I would need that additional world language teacher, again because I'm getting another 30 students or another class of students next year. I just wanted to show you the difference between the core subjects and the electives. On the next slide, this was a question asked of me at the last meeting, so 17 students that asked to take a language this year did not get the opportunity to take it, 84 eighth grade students chose other electives, they didn't choose a world language. In 2023, so next fall, it would be closer to 131 students that either wouldn't have the opportunity to take a language, or may not have the choice. So I invited Buffy Hines to our world language coordinator to say a few words. MasCor says language should be treated as a core subject, and I think that's important, and also to the growth of high school.
Yeah, so first, I'd like to thank everyone for supporting the curriculum coordinator positions. It's been exciting to have all sixth grades and to be able to start to vertically align the curriculum and everything, which has been great. Some of the trouble we got into in the past where, because we don't have Latin anymore, was because maybe one language was cut at the middle school, and another one at the high school, and then the feeder program and all of that, things happened there. We used to have three languages in seventh and eighth grade, we were very strong as far as middle school language programs, and now we're down to two languages and only offered in eighth grade. And if you look at the number of eighth grade students taking a language, on Power School, I don't go back to SASD, but on Power School, in 2016, we had 81% of our language, our eighth graders taking a world language. In 2022, now, we have about 63% of students that are taking a world language, and that's only in eighth grade. And at this time, where we have a new, at DESI, we have a whole new department there for language acquisition, and we have new curriculum frameworks, I was on the committee that helped to form those, and Seal of Our Literacy is a super exciting thing, great opportunities for our EL students, and also students taking a world language. Even BSU now has jumped in that they'll offer 12 credits, college credits, for the Seal of Our Literacy. So, we only started here in 2019 with that, and we've already given out 23 of those in three years. We're skipping the COVID year because nobody would have been. So although it's an exciting time for world languages, now that we have the state support and them asking us to almost move it back earlier, students can absorb the language earlier the better. And here we are, we're kind of trying to catch up to the status quo where we were some years ago. So baby steps, but we want to start moving towards that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
On the next slide, this is what I've been talking about around grade seven exploratory. I went into a class, I covered a class last week, and I said, so seventh graders, tell me how many of you knew what you were picking in sixth grade? And they were like, huh? I said, remember when you picked band or you picked art? They're like, oh, it's quite, I didn't even know what else to do, I didn't know what that even looked like. And I said, so I asked them about this idea, and they seemed, they all gave me a thumbs up, but I think it was telling that they barely remembered what they picked. So, these are just some of the thoughts that I had moving forward, if we're able to do that. And my last slide is just the impact on learning. So we know that, you know, small class sizes don't necessarily mean high test results, but they do allow teachers to give more feedback often, and individualized instruction more regularly. Any staff cuts in core subjects would increase enrollment in those classes, increase special education ratios, and prevent teachers from having common planning every day. In the elective classes, any cuts would increase class size up to 30 students, and we are bound and determined, we want to expose all kids to elective areas, and we, of course, want every student to be a part of our world language community if we can. So, that's my part of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Michaela.
So again, you'll see some similar trends in terms of our school size and enrollment. We expect a bigger bubble here in FY '25, the current seventh grade class, so our numbers do, did dip a little bit, but I do anticipate those to rise.
So can we stop for a second and talk about that? We've had growth in the junior high numbers, but a decline in the high school numbers, and the net is an overall decline over 10 or so years. What is our gap? Is that the charter school numbers that I'm looking at, that show, you know, up from 2.5 to 5%? Are we generally, is that where we're losing students? Is the jump from junior high to high school, we're losing them to the charters?
I think it'd be curious to go back and see the elementary side, which was last, back to 2019 too, right?
So when the bubble came through, the 2007, 2008 Great Recession, lots of families held off, and then there was a baby boom right afterwards, so we're kind of on the other side of that now.
Yeah, but what I'm pointing out is that you had the junior high going up like this, and you've had the high school going down like this, which would suggest, I don't think that, if you put those two side by side, they're going to look like, you know, the trend doesn't hold. You haven't had eighth graders then moving to high school and keeping the number higher, or driving it higher. The trend has been that you've lost net in high school. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, or maybe I'm not thinking clearly, I have a bit of a headache, but what it looks like to me is that you're having a loss between junior high and high school.
Oh, sure.
The enrollment charts may help with the data, because, again, I don't know that the bars on this chart are necessarily lined up with the same exact years of the middle school bars, so I know that Michaela is projecting out two years based upon this current enrollment in the middle school, and I know that Becky is projecting her enrollment out for the next two years based upon the sixth graders in our elementary schools and the current seventh graders who would become eighth graders. So, I think probably a more, a more accurate picture would be the enrollment chart that lays out the ebbs and flows of each, and each year with our, with our budget presentations and each year in our school committee meetings, we provide our school committees with numbers for private school, which we will show you tonight, charter school, which we will show you tonight, we also do vocational schools, I feel like I'm, oh.
School choice.
And school choice. So we have those numbers in this presentation tonight as well.
Just a reminder of our graduation requirements, again, when we're looking at potential cuts, they can support, just to have a visual of the requirements that our students need in order to get their diploma. And then our department averages for class size here at the high school, the number in parentheses is the highest current number in those classes, just to give you a sense, sometimes I think, like, oh, there's only 15, well, yes, and when you add up the average and calculate it, yes, but the reality is some classes are, you know, 25-plus students across the board. These averages include electives, but they don't include our independent studies or our small group classes.
Michaela, can I ask one question? And you don't need to go back to the slides, but the two slides ago, foreign language is, two years of foreign language is recommended, but correct me if I'm wrong, for a student to go on to college, it's pretty much a required?
Yeah, so most four-year institutions will expect two years of a, consecutive years of a world language.
Okay.
We don't have it as a local requirement due to our CTE program.
Right.
Not every student, if you're in CTE and you need a resource, you may not have had the possibility of taking a world language, which is why it was never required for us. But with some changes to how we service our CT students and meet like our PE requirement, we've been able to make some changes to open up that door for them to take world languages.
Thank you.
And then again, our historical FTE changes over time, thanks again to Christine and all of our coordinators for the historical knowledge, they can provide us with this information. You can see we've cut a lot of programs, tech ed, family consumer science, marketing management, but then on the other side, you know, we've expanded CTE offerings, Allied Health, we've added culinary teacher, and an early education and childcare teacher, but we have cut some of our core subject areas, Latin, wellness, ELA, music, and we haven't really restored those since 2005, 2010, those cuts started to begin. We have added CTE programs, we've added support staff, a bridge adjustment counselor, behaviorist, our coordinators, and we restored our assistant principal position back to full time, but we have not added any FTEs in our core subject areas. And then similar trends in the middle school, FTE in our student teacher ratio, we're above the state average. Currently, the state average is 11.9 to 1, 11.8 to 1. And then again, just sharing some considerations if we're, you know, discussing the potential of staff cuts and the impact that would have on learning here at the high school. It would certainly impact the ability for teachers to provide small group instruction, conversing with students, the targeted feedback, you know, the efforts that we're making to really improve those MCAT scores in our classes. From a special ed lens, it's important to recall that prior to 2021, we are out of compliance in many classes because we were not meeting that threshold of no more than 50% of students on an IEP in a class, and, you know, cuts to staff would certainly impact that, we would be out of compliance again. Something to consider in our science department, science teachers are specific to a subject area, and teachers can only teach one outside of their license, and so any test there would certainly impact a license and what is considered a highly effective teacher, right? So a biology teacher can really only teach biology, they can teach one chemistry, they can maybe teach one, you know, physics, but their license is specifically in biology, and so it's not like you could just cut one science teacher and have them cover all those classes. In terms of elective course offerings in our social studies department, they have probably a more robust offerings of electives, but if we were to have staff cuts, they would have to absorb more classes into the ones we require for graduation, which would certainly impact the elective offerings, and a lot of our elective offerings in the social studies department are EP classes, like EP government, EP psychology, things of that nature. And then just some general things to consider with any potential cuts. Fewer staff, that means fewer electives we can offer, that means more students in directed studies. One current example, we've been unable to fill our computer science teacher position this year, and so we had 150 students that we had to relocate, we were able to find another elective for many of them, but not all, and so our directed study numbers, just with that one loss this year, increased significantly. Class size will go up, and then we run the risk of once again being out of compliance to our least restrictive environment, violating our students' rights.
So, the school committee had asked us to tier some cuts and bring our budget, what that would look like if we brought our budget down to a 3% increase and a 2.75% increase. And so, we worked with the building principals, and we began looking at things, for example, the first thing is the district, we would be able to automatically reduce our health insurance cost by $14,000. Christine found out today?
Yesterday, I received an email that was being suggested for the, the general board vote for health insurance for next year, an increase of 4.5%.
Technology, we would reduce that by $25,000, and we believe that we could make that up possibly with rural aid. High school would eliminate the request for a touchscreen for health class, we might be able to get that through ESER. The high school would eliminate the request for a $10,000 lifting cage, that's something that Principal Gill would ask the safer committee to consider for the future. The middle school copiers, we would attempt to get through the ESER grant. The middle school projector and app creator, we would attempt to get through the ESER grant. We would cut the middle school, high school maintenance line by $23,000, that maintenance would still have a 5% increase over last year's budget. We would eliminate the request for the $10,000 for conference room furniture, and we would eliminate the request for... And we would eliminate the request for eighth, ninth grade orientation. And we would attempt to seek funding for some of those items through the ESER grant. Beyond that, we would be looking at staffing reductions. And rather than give you specific staffing positions at this point, we've decided to give you a calculation based on FTEs. So at two FTEs, approximately 55,000 each, we'd be looking at reducing our budget by 235,886.
Can I ask one question on that? I'm sorry. The ninth grade orientation, we just wouldn't have it?
Well, we would cross our fingers and hope that we would either get ESER funding or we would ask for grants and community support and try to piece it together. Or we'd have to go back down to the two-hour freshman orientation versus the two-day transition program that we've been running.
Can we sit on this slide for a minute before we go on to the next tier? What do we have left under ESER? Because I know ESER III was quite substantial, but it's dollars. Are we? I think this might be just the tip of the iceberg of where we might be able to use ESER funds towards next year's budget. But again, you don't want to then incorporate ESER funds into an operating budget because then you hit a fiscal cliff with a sunset. So one-time expenditures make sense for ESER. Do you know how much we have left under that? And have we turned over every part of the budget that wouldn't create that cliff? Or one-time funds where we could utilize ESER funds?
So we, we believe that we have examined the budget with the building principals in terms of what they could, what they could eliminate. If you recall, they cut a lot of lines last year. And so we were hesitant to go back to those same lines again because we're gonna begin to feel the effects of those. In terms of ESER, I think the only thing here is the ninth grade orientation. Everything else is a one-time purchase.
Yep, understood. Are there any other items in this year's budget though, that are one-time? Like items that we could utilize ESER for to free up more dollars for annual expenses? Or more specifically, the two full-time equivalents that you have up on the board just as I said. And I wanted to come to talk today about adding a world language teacher at the middle school. So that's one of my goals this year from the committee side as an individual, is to add that position in. And I'm seeing right here, you're already talking about cutting two just to get us the 3%. So that's why I'm asking about the ESER funds and how aggressive we are in leaning in on those dollars and spending them all.
We're gonna be using the ESER fund for our human resources information system, which we don't currently have, which is critical for our, our functioning. And we're also gonna be using ESER for our website updates, which will also make us ADA compliant as well. But in terms of amounts, I would have to defer to Ryan in terms of where we are.
For the total allocation was 1.169, so.
Just from three or one, two, and three put together?
Just, just on three.
Yes, or three, correct, right?
More than half. So.
And what do you have to expend those dollars by?
A year from September.
So we only have two years to use more than half the money we have and go over $1 million in funding. Let's spend it aggressively so we can avoid some of the stuff I'm seeing right here just in tier one. Just one person's perspective, but I wanted to be very clear. We have a lot of federal dollars that we can dig into, and I think we need to aggressively. Understanding that there's some items that you already have some of those dollars allocated for. There's still a heap of money there.
Yes, and we did ask the principals to go back to their budgets and see what might, what they might be able to pull out to give towards that. And this is what they were able to come up with in terms of possible other grants.
And I would just, I would just.
We can go back again?
Be very creative with the way that you can come up with and explain how these dollars would be used and make sure they fit into one of those three broad categories. I have heard of some audits being used for ESER dollars so far, but they've been gross mismanagement of dollars. They haven't been for actual items that we're seeing up on the board here tonight.
I want to just kind of comment a little bit. I completely agree with everything you just said. The, the one part that gets me a little queasy is not, using if something that's not a one-time budget item, such as staff.
Yep, I'm very, very cautious also with the fiscal cliff. I understand that math very well on that.
Yeah, because.
One-time purchases?
Yeah, because it'll, it'll just, it'll come back at us in a year or two.
Agreed. It just makes me sick that tier one has two full-time equivalents. And I came to the table tonight to propose adding a world language teacher at the middle school. So I'm just having difficulty swearing that knowing that we have hundreds of thousands of federal dollars that we need to spend in the next 18 months or so. And I just want to make sure that this goes wisely so we don't make mistakes here tonight as the committee on how we vote.
So with, with that in mind, we can certainly ask the principals to go back again and, and work on other potential items. They tend to be more recurring costs, some.
That's why we didn't dive into them.
Again, I don't know how the committee feels about recurring costs like supplies and books and things of that nature because the ESER funds will go away.
Use it or lose it.
Right.
I, I think if it comes down to a recurring cost, something like a textbook, where you could stretch it out an extra year versus cutting staff, I would much rather have my kids have an outdated book than not enough teachers. So I kind of second what Jason's saying. I think anything we can do to preserve the people, because that's what the schools are, is the people.
I'll also say we use the ESER funds in Title II A for all of our training and professional development that occurs in the district. As you know, we don't have a district line item dedicated to district-wide professional development.
And I can guarantee your Title I or Title II A funds for next year after being in DC last year. So again, ESER funds, if we need to lean into them. It'd be sad if we left a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table because we couldn't come up with creative ways to spend it for our kids.
Agreed, agreed. That would be insane.
I mean, to your point, Jason, it looks like in the budget presentation that we have last month that there are things like replacement of equipment that are not up here, like the golf cart, AEDs.
So the AEDs, that's a state compliant issue. We need to have those.
Right, but why can't we use ESER funding for it? To Jason's point, it's like there are things that are.
Right, so like it's an annual subscription.
Oh, I thought it was like a purchase.
So some of it's for the devices, but then there's annual subscription that we have to pay.
Okay, well, I mean, but I'm assuming the devices are part of the replacement of equipment costs that are in this budget. And the golf cart is not up there. And like, I mean, to Jason's point.
Right, so I would just, one hesitation I would have is if we take it out of the operating budget, right, something like the AEDs, we're required to have those in place. And then if it's not approved for ESER funding, right, now it's also not in the budget. So we would need to know in advance that it would be approved before we take it out, right?
That was our, those were our fears.
A little bit of a gamble, right?
But I think Jason also made a point.
We need to, we need to, we need to acknowledge the fear, but we also need to move on pulling those funds. I mean, and I did, it's a joke that if we leave a couple hundred thousand on the table, that could have benefited our kids. Like, I'm hoping that doesn't end up happening because we're not utilizing the funds, so.
And not being aggressive enough.
We have no intention of leaving funds on the table.
I don't, I didn't think.
But we, we also don't want to set people up assuming that everything can be covered by ESER and then have things that are necessary fall through.
But have you in your dreams spent all those dollars? Do you know where you want those dollars to go as a superintendent, more or less?
I, I think we've left some opportunity open because unfortunately, as we, as we have seen, there are things that in our, as we move forward, become apparent to us as, as priorities that we have to address. So we're hesitant to race to spend it all, only to find out that we had this wonderful opportunity to invest in something that we may never have that opportunity to invest in again.
So I, I'm, there are no easy choices here. And I'm gonna try to like, put sort of an overall circle around everything. We are, I don't think it's any mystery, we're in the middle of both a para and a teacher contract negotiation. Settlements across the state, I obviously can't give any specifics to our particular situation, but just, you know, think in ballpark terms of settlements across the state have been ranging two and a half to 3.25% kind of thing. We obviously have some number put into the budget to accommodate some kind of settlement. 3.75 is out and beyond where we've got to be. It's not gonna be supported by the towns. You know, Prop two and a half means, you know, there's kind of a cap on what you get done every year. There's nobody here that is wanting to cut headcount. The case that's being made here, I understand it all numerically and so forth, but the, the funding situation is the funding situation. And 82% of the funding is tied up in people. So if we're going to, if we're going to somehow reach a settlement that feels good to teachers in paras and we're not gonna cut headcount, then just about everything almost has to be gambled on making, on utilizing every spare dollar to close the gap everywhere else. And I think that's what Jason is trying to get at, is that you want to lean proactively into the utilization of the $500,000 or $600,000 or whatever it is that is left in order to close out that gap.
And we will do that, if that's the direction of the committee.
I have another question, non-ESER related. Do you want to finish with ESER first?
No, I just want everyone to be clear. I, I want the directive to the principals to be very clear that they're being asked to pull everything out of the budget that could possibly be funded by ESER.
And central office.
Yep.
Like everybody, right? Be creative.
Central office doesn't have any big ticket.
Now we're talking.
You're not, not gonna see a huge amount of relief there, but.
But I want it, I want it to be across the board.
So, and to, to pull out even things that are required with the hope that they will be approved by ESER.
I, I think proactively, that's what you have to do. It's either that or you gotta lean into these scenarios here, which nobody's gonna feel great about for effects on students and nobody's gonna feel great about as far as staff management. Or it's, or it's a, you know, negative outcome at the bargaining table, which is not something anybody's looking for, particularly in a high inflation era. So it's one of those three, one of those three places. And the variable of the three that would feel, you know, most comfortable, I think, that everybody could feel best about would be, you know, leaning into facilities and equipment and federal dollars that are bird in hand.
So we would really need to see what that evaluation, that, that massage of this data looks like in order to see if we can come to a number that we'd be comfortable voting and presenting to the towns.
So, you know, again, I don't know how deep you want to go, but the technology budget alone, hardware, most software, curriculum software. Again, it will appear as a year of zero. But those are two big numbers you could work with. The equipment line. We can see what goes with equipment. Those are, Christine, do you have those numbers?
For the question?
Yeah, so they have a better sense of how much more could be reduced. I'm trying to think of the big, the big line items that would make the, I'm not like, you know, $900 here and there. We're talking the whole line item, putting it into ESER. Because that's what our directive right now is, so.
And is, is that gonna fly in what's the timing of us knowing that that's, we, we use it? And then if we get audited, we have an issue?
Ryan, do you know what?
Yeah, I think we'd have to, we'd have to submit, so with the federal grants, you're required to submit how you propose to move, use the money, including like what's gonna be a supply, a contract service, travel conferences and things like that. So you have to allocate percentages. And then if you're not gonna use it exactly that way, you have to submit an amendment to DESI and get it approved. We do that all the time. We're totally prepared to do this on ESER III. Usually I hear back in about two or three weeks. And Jill and I have had this conversation. We know this amount of money is there. We're prepared to write the amendment, so. I mean, and the point I just wanted to make too is ESER II expires. That was 543,000 total between the three towns in the region. That expires in September. That's 95% spent with $10,690 remaining. So I just want to give that, we, I think we're in a good spot with that one. And we, we hope to do the same with the remaining funds. So I just wanted to let you know that wasn't, the direction helps. And we're prepared to submit an amendment and get approval on how to use the funds.
Chair?
Yes, I have a quick question. The ESER III funding number that you gave the committee at 1.7, whatever it was, you said it would be more than half left. Is that for all three towns in Silver Lake or just for Silver Lake?
That's for all three towns and, and for Silver, for Silver Lake. So there are specific percentages of portions, you know, for each town. So there is an allotment for each town, but it, it varies. But of all of them, more than half is available. But see, Halifax's would be, given that we're already talking about identifying certain potential positions for, to be funded that way, it would vary depending on the choices of the school committee.
So Silver Lake doesn't have access to the entire number that you gave us?
That's correct. Our, well, our spending philosophy has, right, our spending philosophy has been there was a specific allocation made to Halifax. And we mark what percent is spent for Halifax. So if we were asked, how did Halifax expend its ESER III? We would have, be able to work backwards and provide that amount of funding.
So what's the amount of funding that's for Silver Lake? Because that's all we really, as a committee here tonight, can be talking about expending.
I don't have the exact report, right?
I just want to make clear in my head that here I'm thinking we have access to all of that. And it sounds like we don't because some of it's allocated to the.
Yeah, I think the initial, right, I think the initial amount for Silver Lake, if my spreadsheet is right, was 449,514 total for, for Silver Lake.
For ESER III or II?
ESER III.
Okay, so much smaller, remember?
And then what we're talking about doing potentially here, massaging this data for utilizing these funds, it would be the funds net of the HR system that we've already talked about and anything else that you've already prioritized for using the funds for, right? So we're talking about the net amount that's available theoretically. Okay.
Just to answer the question that Jill had had a few minutes ago. For our FY '24 budget, equipment is about 93,000. Hardware, which is one of the other areas that you mentioned that would be applicable on to ESSER 3 funding. Hardware is 165,000 for the high school and 85 for the middle school, so about $250,000.
So without wiping those to zero, we could do a percentage of 60, 70% of those with ESSER, leaving the lines with some value there, explaining to our finance committees that we're utilizing the lifetime federal funds and that they'll see some increases in those lines in years moving forward. It's happened before when we cut specific lines very, very low to make budgets work. And we're also showing good due diligence with the federal funds that we've been allocating. My other question is, Christine, if we could go back to the homeless transportation. What did you have that cross in the district for next year, just as our number? I'm sure it's not an exorbitant amount, but.
No, it's not, but it's, it's worth noting. $47,000 between the middle school and the high school.
And what was your assumption for a circuit breaker?
Silver Lake has not got a circuit breaker, so we don't have any assumptions.
And that also means no special transportation costs as well?
We do have special education transportation costs, but our special education transportation costs do not meet the threshold to have, to seek reimbursement.
So if the threshold was changed, potentially we could, but as of right now, we have.
As of right now, we can't.
And homeless transportation, which you have at 47,000, which is an average over 10 years or so.
It's over 12 years with special emphasis on the more recent years.
Right, and this year we did not have to pay.
Right, but if we receive the funding to reimburse, we don't get it to the following year because it comes in the following year, it's over the year, because it's prior year.
I wouldn't count on it at this point, but I'm just noting that there is a potential that we would end up seeing homeless transportation, but I would not put that into our budget at this point. Thank you for entertaining my questions. Anybody else?
This is a great discussion. This, we're, we're getting into the weeds, which is important here.
And because of our efforts, we recognize that an additional, to get to 2.75, under our previous assumptions about the use of grants, would require an additional 1.0 FTE reduction. If it is the will of the committee, we will certainly go back to the line items that apply and reduce them by 60 or 70% and apply for ESSER.
And see that, what that does to it?
We know. It'll, it'll obviously bring our budget down. Cost-saving measures include capital plans to maintain facilities, the utilization of grant funds, and we depend heavily upon the grants for our budgets for a number of areas, particularly professional development, which is, in the case of district-wide professional development, is completely funded by grants. And revenue sources such as the power purchase agreement. And when Christine gives the assessment update, she will also provide information about our revenues as she does annually. This year, our assessments will be during our next budget meeting because the governor's budget is not yet finalized.
Can I ask one thing, and this came up in a, a meeting the other day? Christine, I, there's a number of newer people on the committee. Can you give just a high-level summary overview of that power purchase agreement? Because we signed it eons ago when John Tuffy was here. And if you could just do that for us.
In 2014, the plant went live, so we have committed our annual usage to a program where a solar facility was built in Dartmouth, Mass. And they had to partner multiple entities to come up to the generation of what that plant would be. So that's how, we have to work the musicalities. For us, it happens to be us and COG are the two entities that have brought together for this. What we do is, every kilowatt hour generated by that plant, we purchase those credits for 10 cents a kilowatt hour. So we do that on a monthly basis. Then once a month, it goes back to the grid and that is sold on the open market for the going rate price. So up until this year, we were getting between 14 and 17 cents a kilowatt hour. We're now getting in the mid 20 cents per kilowatt hour. So it's doing well, but my only hesitation has always been, you ask every year if this plant is shut down from the plant for maintenance or anything like that. And there has not been any. If the plant shuts down, we had an experience the past couple of years where I hawked, flew into a piece of equipment and the plant was shut down for several weeks. So that can, if that happened in the summertime, that could really alter our predictions. So I've always been extremely cautious on that. But just so you know, this year already we've hit over $400,000 in revenue from the site. And year-to-date since it went live in May of 2014, we're at 2.7 million. So it's really benefited us.
And you're.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You're, you're always very conservative and we appreciate that. You keep us out of trouble. Remind me, what have you baked into the budget?
I haven't, well, it's, I haven't done anything yet because it's all in our, raising the funds to support our budget. And so my kickoff of that is really is what I get from the state tells me, what the information is from the state. But I'm always keeping my, I keep my information up to date so I know where revenue was coming in for the purchase bargain. So I have, I dare, if we need to tweak that a little bit, but not knowing what it, because they're saying there will not be a plant shut down, then theoretically it could run all year long. So I've been, you're right, I've been very cautious and my estimates have always been in the mid $200,000 range.
Go ahead.
So you allocate 200,000 of the revenue into the operating budget?
No, so our operating budget, I guess this is in my head, of course. My operating budget is a standalone document.
Right.
And the step two is the funding of that budget. So they're, they work, they go side by side, but things aren't changeable. So there isn't a line in our operating budget that says, oh, this is where I'll put the extra revenue from. The extra revenue feeds into our E and D and then hopefully benefit the following year.
Right, so we don't use the power purchasing money for operations. We use it.
To fund our total budget.
To fund, right, okay.
And it reduces our assessments.
Yeah, so how many more years do we have on this power purchase agreement?
It's a 20-year agreement and it, so it went live in May of 2014, so 2014.
And then after that, do we know what happens? It's just.
The site still remains active, but our agreement is for the 20 years and theoretically that was the timeframe of the, the usage of the plant.
Sure, used for life, sure.
But they are, go beyond that. They have plants that were in place previously are going beyond the timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
And potential budget impact, state aid, federal funding cuts, reduction in grants such as Title I and Title II that we rely on. Any unforeseen unfunded mandates, loss of students to school choice can reduce state aid, severe weather can impact our, our budget lines and insurance. But we, we think we're all set with insurance now, right?
I believe so.
So for this year. So here is the number of students attending, grade seven through 12, attending in-state and out-of-state private and parochial schools. And you can see that the numbers are, are down overall since last year by only one student, down from 2020, even more so. But we're down to 69 students attending in-state and out-of-school private and parochial schools. Our number of charter school enrollments rose, I think it's by three, but I have to look at something closer. Yes, it rose by three students. The good news is, is that it would appear that the formula for tuition, charter school tuition reimbursement was adjusted. So even though you'll see the charter schools.
For 23, for 23 it was adjusted.
Yes. You'll see that the, at the very top of the chart, it might be easier to see on your Chromebook than it is on that chart up there. Charter school sending tuition was 1,217. Charter school tuition reimbursement was about 323,000. And the total expense of charter school tuition was 893,000. That's actually down from the previous year, even though we have more students. But the percentage of students attending charter school is now at 4.58%, which is up from last year, which was 4.4%. But down from fiscal year FY '21, which hit an all-time high of 4.8%.
And I, I do want to just point out, you know, talking about enrollment, we can see here that over the course of six years of change, we have decreased about 230, 240 students.
So I think that's it. Those are all of our pieces of data for this evening. In addition to examining what we may be able to pull out for ESSER, are there any other requests of the committee?
I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that gets us close to where we need to be. The next time we meet is March, that's the month we need to vote the budget. Any other questions to come?
I, I'm willing to go with a higher year-over-year increase personally because we know that many of the factors in our budget are inflation-related. Now, I'm not going to ignore the enrollment size. I think that's dramatic. On this page here, going from 1,700 to 1,500 students in the seven to 12, with the additional $500,000 of charter school expense, you can see there over that timeframe, those are material numbers that I think we've got to try and say, okay, this two and a half to 3% range of increase every year has kind of hit a breaking point. We don't have much to, to give on the, the non-employment side. I mean, we're cutting 8,000 here, 10,000 there on, on stuff. I think we're, we've drained that option as we're trying to go to ESSER and really hit that for another year of maybe delaying some of these harsh decisions in terms of what the curriculum, what the course book looks like. But 240 students less from 17 to 23.
It's a 13% decrease.
That's, that's harsh.
And if, and student, and if I got the net adjustments that have happened over that time correctly, that was about a 7% adjustment. So our model hasn't, and again, I'm doing this off the top of my head and with a headache, so I might be getting it wrong. But to your point, you know, the model, the model's a problem. And to your point, there aren't many places to go. And I think for this year's sake, you can make a, you can make a gamble with ESSER and things like that, but sometime in very short order, you're going to need to either come up with new sources of income or you're going to have to fix the model.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with a 3-plus% going to the towns. With this information, knowing that if we do cut deeper, it's got to come back to headcount. It's got to come back to what we offer in our, in our course offerings. You know, adding seventh grade languages is just going to be tough when we're, you know, increasing class size in social studies or sciences or whatever we want, you know? We've talked about adding computer science at the CTE. I mean, we can't add that with the numbers we have here, unfortunately. I mean, if it's, if it's in demand, I understand, but we just can't add programs of studies because they need heads.
I'm gonna just, I don't know that I could go to Halifax with a 3-plus% increase. And Halifax, two out of the last three or four years, has been forced to accept the budget. We voted it down and the other two towns approved it and we had to absorb it. I, I'm not comfortable bringing something over 3%. I was, I was hoping to, to be a little bit under, but I really don't know that I would feel comfortable bringing something over 3% to Halifax.
Does anything cost 3% less than it did last year? You know, like, to put it in perspective.
Yeah.
We are servicing basically the same amount of kids next year as actually net increase. And we're not coming in with a nine or a 10, which is the inflationary adjustment that we're seeing across the board. When you take energy and food out, you put energy and food back into it, the numbers double digits. I understand the 3 is tough to swallow, but a 3 is a bargain year-over-year to giving our students high-quality education in their local district.
Yeah, we have a less, our budget's less impacted by inflation. It's more than that 20% than on the 80%.
The, the problem is funding sources. It doesn't, our, it, in a lot of ways, our, like, I feel exactly like you feel, but my opinion about it doesn't matter very much because Prop 2 and 1/2 is Prop 2 and 1/2. There's, there is a cap on what you can, what you can get from a tax-based revenue. So if you don't have another revenue stream, yeah, inflationary periods are real bad.
And we've never asked our towns in recent history for an overcut. So 2 and 1/2 is what we typically try to abide by. But I also know that the levies are not necessarily at the max in any of our three towns. And I'm not suggesting that we push that boundary out. I think we need to find that balance. As Jill put up there in the first slide, the number one priority was supporting the students' needs and that is counterbalanced by what the three towns can manage. So I think it's pretty darn important that we reach out, like Gordon you said, you know, our opinion. We need to get some data from the finance committees of the three towns. Some pretty hard information that we can look at. And then we can use that information from our perspective of looking out for the kids.
Yeah, I, I agree if I could. We should go to the towns with what is defensible for the budget of the school. And if it's not manageable by the towns because of outside of the school factors, then yeah, that's the whole process. We get declined at town meeting, then we come back and sharpen our pencil in 30 days, right? And that's, that's not a fun thing to do. But if this is the environment that demands that, then I'm okay with putting the extra work in in May and June to, you know, make it work.
I think you might need a contingency meeting on the books between the date you need to vote by and this meeting.
Yeah, we generally, we've done that a number of years.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. New business, old business. And I understand those should come off if there's nothing under them going forward. SLEA.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I know these are tough decisions you have to make and I appreciate the robust conversation you're having about it. We certainly support looking into ESAR funds aggressively, like was suggested tonight. And we understand that that can't fund things that are continuing year-to-year. But it could get us out of the bind now. I did have one question about the presentation. Jill, so you have all the things that had been previously proposed that were being cut. And then it said a reduction of two FTE teachers. Is that withdrawing the proposed new positions and two cuts on top of it, or just?
The new proposed positions are not currently in the budget.
Okay, so it would be two more on top of that and those wouldn't happen. Got it? Okay. All right, well, I think the other thing to talk about is was brought up is negotiations. You know, we're hoping to get that all settled sooner or later. Certainly give you more color about the budget as well. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that the committee's willing to come back to the table with an mediator for paraprofessionals at the end of the month. I'm hoping we can get a deal that the parents can vote yes on. Back in December, George Andrews had asked about what our position is. So I'll just take a moment to, you know, publicly say what our offer on the table is now. So the committee had offered an additional two steps, a 2% higher in years 10 and 15. We're asking to make those 4% higher and to come in the subsequent years with the current steps. We think, you know, as was referenced earlier, with the current inflation climate and seeing districts, not that far from here, getting 40% increases to the paraprofessional salaries, that that increase is very reasonable. And then the other thing we're asking for is three new vacation, paid vacation days or holidays. And we talked a lot about the vacation time for paraprofessionals and how they're the only employees in the school that can't get a paycheck over vacation. Everyone else is either on salary or can work over vacation or take vacation time. Parents are the only people who during a school vacation, we can't get a paycheck for many reasons. So by adding those three holidays, which would be Christmas, President's Day, and Patriots' Day, they get paid at least one of those holidays. So I hope that that's a proposal that the committee's able to consider. And we're looking forward to meeting to hash it out with an mediator at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Administrative review.
In review, I spoke to our chair and John, the Chair of Union 31, to ask to be put on the next joint meeting's agenda because we will be starting to send out evaluation materials and have conversations about superintendent's evaluation. I am looking into whether or not we can have a professional development for the school committee members on how to utilize that. I'm willing to read it, but I'm checking with the Attorney General to make sure that won't be a violation of open meeting law. Under current regulations, if I'm offering a PD, that's not covered by open meeting law. So I'm just going to get a finding from the Attorney General before I offer it. If I can't do it, I'll let MASC come in. And one of the reasons why I want to offer the professional development for the school committee members is because we've had terrible turn-ins of the evaluation of superintendent, which is one of the three major obligations of school committee members. And I'm hoping it's because people are either intimidated by the process or just don't understand. So I'd like to give that educational approach and good faith offering to all of us. So I'm looking into that sooner rather than later because we need to get those evaluation materials out so we can collate them and have our final meeting to vote in.
Any comment? CTE.
No updates?
No updates, okay. Chairman's report, she'll come back, I'll skip over that one. Let's see, Agent?
I can give Paul plenty of time right here. This is pretty lengthy, I'll try and add. So as Christine mentioned earlier, still waiting on host one. So prior to that, we can't give us assessments until that comes out. The only number I have from the state so far is they anticipate a 1.6% increase in revenues from FY '24, FY '24, which is more optimistic than I thought it was going to be. Like the thank Happy Lenatra, she has filed the two bills on our behalf that I requested her to file, HD 1419, which would allow us to increase the special ed reserve funds that towns can have now from 2% of net school spending to 5% of net school spending. She also filed HD 1420, which would establish and allow individual towns to have a regional school assessment reserve fund for years when their assessment is lower. They could look money away for the years when assessments are higher. So I really appreciate Kathy and our chief of staff Chris for putting those out there. Senator Jake Oliveria has said that he'll file similar bills on the Senate side that will start an all-call to get cosponsors for those bills. It won't cost anybody any money. It's towns that have control over these dollars and it's just a savings vehicle for them to utilize in times of need. We're supporting the full funding of regional transportation. Last year, we didn't get full funding. We got pretty much a line from FY '22 to FY '23. So hopefully we can see some relief there because we can get over $600,000 of regional school, regional transportation, so that can be substantial dollars for our bottom line. We're trying to adjust circuit breaker. It's no longer tied to foundation, but for all intents and purposes, it's basically four times foundation and then you get 75% of that in a good year, which we had eight good years in a row. We're looking at reducing that to about three times the foundation and 90% reimbursement. So this would be a huge ask, but we think we have the ability to get that through this year. Also looking for collaboratives to be able to get MSBA funding for school buildings. Right now, they have to privately source all of their funding. We're members of the Pilgrarian Collaborative. I was a member of that board when we did a building project and it was there to do without MSBA support. We're also pushing for year three of six of the Student Opportunity Act, whereas we're seeing some of the relief for our local districts elementary-wise for special ed, special ed transportation. Supporting HD 766 and SB 1013, which would make permanent the universal school meals for all. This year was funded for $120 million. Governor Keel just recently had to do a supplemental budget to increase the amount of funds for that because it was going to be utilized by 230. But there is a push right now to make that permanent so families and students won't have to worry about getting their breakfast and lunch when they're at school. Unfortunately, my trip to DC was not that inspiring. I had with nine of our 11 senators and congresspeople while I was there, brought up full funding of IDEA. They said we'd be lucky to get 12%, which is about three times less than the statute requires. And we're talking that there's some movements in the House to go back to 2019 federal funding thresholds to kind of retreat back from the extra fund to be added on since COVID, which could potentially devastate Title I and Title II, like Jill was bringing up earlier. So it wasn't a fun trip. It was really kind of sad, depressing. Good news is meeting Monday with the leaders of the Superintendent's Association and the School Business Officers Association to try and come up with mutual advocacy items pushed for in this year's legislative cycle. And I just got appointed Local Government Advisory Commission. And the first meeting's on Tuesday. I'll get sworn in by Lieutenant Governor for that. So another opportunity to make sure our voice is heard in different quarters of the state. MASC Day on the Hill is going to be on the Hill this year, back in Boston State House. And we have a new venue for the morning portion. It's the UMass Forum. If you've never been, it is beautiful. It's like being in the top of the hub, but right next to the State House. Lunch will be in the State House and it will be served by culinary vocational programs from across the state. And hopefully by that point, you will have a full brain and a full belly to then go and talk to your state senator and state reps about what we need to fund education in Massachusetts.
Thank you. You know, after the budget conversation, what they take away from us, but you know, you got ESAR funds or something like that, you know? Net, we just never seem to be in a better position.
Net, we can't predict, unfortunately. You know, Christine trying to come up with a budget and Jill and Ryan and the principals, we don't have the state number to work from. It's pretty difficult. You know, we do have an increase in students next year. It's about a 1% increase. Does that mean we're going to see a 1% increase in state funding? I don't know. It depends when they last calculated our health harness number. So there's a lot of variables that we can't predict at this point. And we're really dependent on House One coming out and Christine being able to really drill down on some of those numbers. So again, I would highly advocate for us to have a pencil in meeting between now and the date you need to vote for the budget.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. It might be hard to find that date, but I don't disagree.
Maybe we can all go to Dave and help him have a nice, happy, positive day together.
You know, I seem to remember them sending me a check a few months ago saying that, you know, the Massachusetts taxes collected last year were too high. You know, just, just keep my check and put it someplace, you know?
I will be optimistic that I think we're going to see a dramatic increase in state funding for FY '24. I think we have a good chance of achieving some movement on circuit breaker and on regional transportation.
That would be nice. All righty, thank you. That was a wonderful report. Negotiations, we're going to go into executive session at the end of this meeting to talk about that.
We have chairman's too there.
I'm sorry?
We skipped chairman's for you.
Oh, you did. Karen, I'm sorry, I just assumed you had gone through it.
I don't have anything from it.
Did we include in the package tonight the annual report I wrote for the towns?
I don't think so.
Can you, or at your convenience, so that you folks have what I sent to the towns on our behalf? Thank you. And that would be the extent of my correspondence. Tac?
So we had a meeting last Thursday. The biggest items were, we started our preliminary evaluation for the treasurer and we'll be turning in our reports end of next week and then they'll kind of amalgamate all of those. No issues there. He's doing a really great job and checks off.
He's doing about 100 perfection, so.
Yeah, he's, he's pretty awesome. And then Dimna just introduced a few of the program directors of the different buildings. Those were kind of the highlights. We did go into executive session after that and that's kind of all I can say about that at this point. I consulted with Russ and he said, I can tell you that we had it, but that was about it. And our next meeting is the first Thursday of March.
Okay, great, thank you. Policy?
I think I covered that earlier.
Revolving funds, no meeting? Safer?
Okay, so we had a quiet meeting on Tuesday. Primary mission was to look at what we want to do about that administrative building. And the first thing I want to bring to your attention is, before Fred left us, he did give us a legal opinion that it is Silver Lake Regional Schools property. So we control the project, but we will definitely need to partner with the three other school committees in our towns as we approach this because it impacts all four school boards. The building that we currently have is not ABA compliant. It's not able to house all of the administrators in one place. We looked at renovations versus new construction. And believe it or not, the renovation, which would include additional space, actually ended up coming out about $1 million more than new construction. Part of that is we would need temporary spacing for administrators because they could stay in the current central office as we build in the newer one. So this would all be a single-floor construction with at least two degresses. So that would eliminate the need for elevators. Elevators right now could cost about $300,000 per unit if it's a fully ABA compliant elevator. We're looking at potentially asking for some additional square footage because the way they presented it to us was exactly what we need right now. And we've seen what happens when we plan for it right now in the future, it's not enough. So we did ask them to try and push it out by 800 to 1,000 more square feet. The location that we all suggested for them to continue planning on is up the street from Kingston, continuing to stay on the same main road. There is a tree area island between some of the inroads, one to the middle school, one to the high school back lot. We're looking at that area there that might need some leveling filled, but no major issues. We think the utilities would work. We're pretty sure that the sub that would work at that site level. So the total cost, and this is rough numbers, okay? Because we were putting in percentage for potential furnishing, finishing. This does have contingency built into it. And this is just for FY '24 numbers, so '25 numbers. Like, they're trying to project inflation and nobody's doing a really good job with that right now. It is, the total bill would be somewhere around $6 million. So as a committee, we looked at the debt that's coming off of the rolls for the two building projects that we did. And Chris noted that '26, '27 seems to be when a lot of that debt is going to be rolling off and this project would kind of fit right in to that gap that we would see. So it wouldn't increase the tax base or the requests from the towns from Silver Lake if we did this with the debt falling off the two building projects to start up on this construction. Any questions about the admin bill? It literally takes one issue with ABA and we're in a heap of trouble. This is the proverbial camp we've been kicking down the road. Because when I joined the committee, this was something that had already been kicked down the road, right?
Forever.
2023, this project needs to be done. We think we have a revenue stream, right, to fund it. It won't affect the town's tax base. Chris?
The only thing I'll add is the, if we go forward with something like this, the existing building really doesn't have a use. It's not ABA compliant, we can't just repurpose it. We'd almost have to just demo it and deal with the space being empty again.
The demo cost is estimated in the total cost of new construction at about $75,000.
Yeah.
We did discuss trying to save it and how we could potentially utilize it, but it was pretty much assessed, like Chris just said, we'd be better off getting rid of it and planning some trees or changing the traffic pattern potentially for the way into the middle school. So that was a big point of conversation, is trying to improve the safety of the traffic pattern for students and parents during drop-off time. Because we do, as a committee, we do understand that is an issue. In the capital plan, last time we met as a committee, we worked on an idea of safety and equity. And we approached the capital plan in that thing. And we managed to get the capital plan to right around $550,000. That's down from $1.5 million. And that would include $200,000 for the envelope to continue to work on a water mitigation for the buildings and roofs. This would also include the five doors for the CTE program for the safety issues they're causing, but also could be R value of installation. Putting in a updated and to code electrical panel for our metal fab students. And also it would put in the sound system for the theater here at the high school. We had $60,000 for one of the JV base bathrooms as well. So we really cut a lot of items off of the capital plan for those sort of items that we have. And again, our guidelines for that was safety and equity for our students. So that's the number we're proposing. I don't know if you have access to the capital plan and share that at this point?
Is it?
Yeah, I haven't. It's in Safer.
Safer.
Oh, it's in Safer, okay.
If you can add it to the general committee, so they have that number to look at.
Can you see it? It's 573, yeah. Okay, it's 573, yeah.
So let's just get some access to it, and then perhaps if there's a, a motion to accept.
We utilized Chris's method of counting up instead of trying to count down, and having those, having those two pillars to kind of base all of our decisions on. It, it was quite a quick process, to be honest, once we sat down at the table.
Yeah. The only thing I'll add, that we took off, is the HVAC. Can you speak on that one?
Yeah, so there are two gas-fired HVAC units on the roof, one of which Michaela had mentioned in the previous meeting, broke down over the summer, and they basically put it back together with tinfoil and glue. Don't really have the parts to keep repairing these items, could fail at any point. $300,000, we're going to put it out as a warrant article to our three towns at town meeting. Again, if one of these breaks mid-year, and we have to do an emergency repair on it, a single unit could cost $225,000 to $250,000 just for one. If we do this as planned maintenance, it's a $300,000 ask. This is not part of the program that we did with ARPA, so we're just going to have to be very clear what the $300,000 is for, right, versus what the ARPA funds were used for. And the ARPA funds were used for putting in air heaters that could deal with air conditioning of the two buildings, so we can get more utilization out of it to deal with some humidity issues we have in the classrooms, and some extreme heat days during September and June, so we can focus on the academics.
Any questions on that? Any comments on that? Is there a motion to accept the capital plan as presented for this coming year?
So I moved.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? That was great work coming down to, you know, last, it, it seemed, it seemed more difficult during our, our last meeting, so I'm glad you folks took it back and, and, and worked with it as a, a subcommittee. I think we all appreciate that work that was done. Okay. School start time working group. We did not complete our agenda at the joint meeting prior to this meeting, so I think we had talked last time about putting a hold on that working group, but we wanted to talk to the, the joint committee about that. We're going to schedule another joint committee meeting as soon as possible to finish our agenda, and we will, we'll tackle that item when we get together again. Treasurer's report.
This is me, right? This is me reading the warrants? Or further along? I don't know why I have a real mental block. Okay. We had a total accounts payable inclusive of revolving funds and, and grants and school lunch and so forth of $1,460,106. Our payroll was $1,786,938.66 for a grand total of $3,247,446.66. Did I do that good enough?
Yes.
Do we need to vote that?
Christine gave a thumbs up, so.
Do we need to vote that? I forget, to accept that?
No.
Just to the minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
Union 31, again, we met before this meeting. We voted, we reviewed and voted some contracts, but again, we have to get back together to complete our agenda. Okay, before we motion to go into executive session, dates to remember, winter vacation, February 20th through the 24th, early release day, March 9th, and our next Silver Lake meeting, March 9th. Although I think we're going to end up having one before then, so.
When do we need to vote the budget?
At the March 9th meeting.
It's 45 days before the first town meeting, and I think it's Kingston, it's the second weekend, I can't get the exact date, but it's 45 days before that.
Yeah, but, no, yeah, we talked to them about pushing it back, because they were doing it so early.
They were doing it in April last year, where they did move it to May.
Yeah.
But in Halifax, it's in Clinton, right after that, so.
Right.
So potentially.
The third week of March.
Right, potentially May 9th, March 9th, getting a meeting between now and then, it might not be possible, but getting a meeting in after March 9th, before the 45 days.
So do you want to put something on the calendar in case we need it?
Does anybody have the actual date of Kingston Town Meeting?
So is it the second Saturday in May?
I know, she, she's stucked it up.
Maybe. I don't remember that, each one has a different formula, but they are on Saturday, so that makes sense. I'll look it up on the website.
The 30 days of April. If we push 15 days back into March.
We're not too far.
Gives us May 1st as like, you know, just so we don't have to sit around and twiddle our thumbs too much. The 16th would put us within compliance.
That's only a couple of days after the 9th.
Understood, but I mean, if we get some heavy information on the 9th, some of us might not be ready to pull the trigger on a hay.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, I.
It also gives our administrative team some time to crunch some numbers and figure some things out.
How do you look schedule-wise?
Yeah, it's May 6th, the first Saturday.
We are planning to have the information for you for the March 9th meeting. March 16th is available. We don't have a meeting scheduled that night, so that's, you know, it.
So do we want to put something out there as an absolute default, you know, last? Okay.
Yeah.
We may not need it, but.
That's the benefit of doing it out with a fact, too.
Yeah.
We don't need it, we can cancel it.
Kingston Town Meeting is Saturday, mid-6th. Did you say March 14th, Jill?
16th.
March 16th.
It's a Thursday, and just figured that was a good date for most of us. We'll call that one a contingency, hopefully we get this this time.
Okay, and that would just be budget. All righty. Okay, thank you, everyone, and I would entertain a motion from this committee to go into executive session, not to return.
Make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to regular session pursuant to M G L J 3 D A, Section 2183, discuss strategy to respect the litigation of the open meeting we had in number of effect on the litigation position of the federal body, and then chair so declares executive session to M G L J 3 D A, Section 2187, to comply with act under the authority of any general specific law with the approval of the executive session minutes of 11223 and 2223.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Jason?
Yes, please.
Michael?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Summer? Lauren? Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Thank you again, folks. Let's have a five or 10-minute break in between us.